Good morning, June 9th. Oh, sorry.
Prayer today. Saturday was Flag Day and the 200th anniversary birthday of the United States Army. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to live in Jogga County. This is one of the best places to live, work, and play. Lord, we thank you for our flag that flies over our nation. We thank you for the stars and stripes that represent our free country. Guard us and protect us from war and fear. We ask for your blessing for our country and its leaders. Let's pray for the police, first responders, doctors, nurses, and all healthcare professionals. Let's pray for grace to overcome adversity, for hope in times of despair, for our military and veterans. I raised, I was raised that we always stand for the flag and kneel for the fallen. For those who disrespect a flag, have never been handed a folded monkey. Lord, inspire us hope for the future, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Good morning. Good morning. On June 9th, as county administrator, I conferred with the Burton Township trustees, requesting that a hearing be held on the liquor license being requested by 15-015 Enterprises LLC, located at 15-015 Kinsley Road, Middlefield, Ohio, C New 6549500. That is all.
Thank you.
Good morning. Adrian Gordon with the Commissioner's Office. The next item on the agenda is the Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution 25-133, requesting the county auditor to establish a new fund called the Dog Shelter Cattle Building and Improvements Fund to account for monies received from the state, county, or any other grant or donation from any organization or the public to be expended for the purposes of acquisition, construction, or improving existing or future fixed assets of the Jogga County Dog Wardens related to shelters and/or cattles.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner, okay, I, Commissioner.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Adrian. The county auditor will present an update on the current phishing attack.
Good morning.
Good morning. You get a little sun?
A little bit, yeah. That's my shirt reflection. Chuck Waldorf, John McCounty Auditor. I've also brought, oh, Zach, you want to introduce yourself?
Zach McCloud, ADP Director of the Department of Advanced Research in Cypress County.
And then, taking up the rear, is Frank, there's ADP.
You can hold the chair, Frank, if you want. You're good, alright.
He likes the shotgun here. What I would like to do, and this is kind of unprecedented for ADP because we've had these incidences in the past. They've just never risen to the severity that we're experiencing now. So I thought, because of, I know I've been texting some of the electeds and keeping people informed, and Frank has been sending to users regular updates of the progress we've made and what we've been experiencing. I thought it was important for the general public to be aware of what the county is experiencing because they're, quite frankly, there's spillover risk. And that's kind of what I want Zach to talk to. We have really two takeaways we'd like the public to understand about what the county has been experiencing across the state. And in that regard, I think those takeaways could make us all safer, both at home with our own internet usage as well as exchanging data with each other. So with that, Zach, if you could give us a little bit of the background of how the events occurred, not necessarily the detail, but the mechanics?
Sure. So we learned this as it progressed. We didn't know all this information right away, but basically, the mechanics of it is that there was a conference center that had been, that had become compromised in some capacity. Whether that is through compromised Wi-Fi or a separate Wi-Fi connection that was spun up there that people were connecting to, we're not sure of the exact mechanics of how they became compromised, but we know that there were government entities there, including different counties and county association.
This conference center was just east of Columbus, so you know.
And once those users were logged into probably their email or something, their computers, they became compromised, and on that same date, we saw the first phishing emails coming out from one of the compromised entities. And that happened on May 20th. A week later, we saw a different variation of that same phishing email come out. And then, another week later, we saw another variation of the phishing email come out.
And Zach, when was the conference again?
It was on May 20th.
Okay, so it, and then the phishing email came out, you said a week later?
Well, the first one came out that day.
That day, okay.
And then, the, which seemed to have been maybe a test. The second one came out a week later from the same county, but a different entity within that county. The third one came out from the association. And that one unfortunately was a large breach. It was a very large contact list that they had gone a hold of, and it, from there, it spread to many, many counties in the state. I would be surprised if there's any county that didn't receive the phishing emails, but whether or not they acted on them or not. This was one of the largest widespread events we've ever seen for the state of Ohio. And it really showed that many counties are very unprepared for this type of event.
So when we discovered the anomaly ramping, that's when we became concerned. You know, you're always getting attacked, that's kind of our daily process. But when you're seeing it coming from legitimate county email, not necessarily Jogga County email, this was another county's legitimate email address. That tends to open up a whole nother horizon for us because typically, people trust people they know. And especially, this happened to be an engineering group. Engineers communicate with a lot of different entities, with townships, with villages, you know, with other government agencies. So the, when they harvested what we believe to be the, a list of attendees at this conference, they then had access to a variety of other legitimate email addresses. And when that occurs, you know, that becomes very dangerous for all of us. One thing I do want to highlight is, we had a very early warning detector that was in the Board of County Commissioners's office that alerted us to what we believe was the bow of this event. And that was very helpful for us because it actually, it puts us on heightened awareness. If we interrogate a payload and we recognize the payload was in fact nefarious, we then start scrubbing other mailboxes, is that payload in other people's mailboxes? And we kind of do a mass scrubbing. And that was very good for us because I think it reduced the subset of vulnerability for us. And in doing that, I think Zach and the team, although they spent a lot of hours doing that, and we have some umbrella protection software that is helping us, you know, it takes human interaction. If this were robotic, we would invoke robots, but we can't. It takes people figuring out, is this legitimate, or is this in fact, you know, not legitimate? And I will say, you know, just recently, the commissioners approved us moving to a new version of Microsoft Office which allowed for some tools that we didn't have prior. And there was an upcharge for that particular event. Part of that upcharge is the ability of using a sandbox environment, an environment to take payload, put it in an environment that is not on our backbone or network, and it can be interrogated as to the effects that it could cause. And it's in a, basically in a quarantine manner. And by that ability to do that, we saved a lot of potential heartache. Zach, could you address, we did have, I think, three workstations which did click on the payload, but then it became isolated to that environment, is that correct?
So we had two workstations and one cellphone, yes. And yes, because it was identified so early, we were able to take action early on this. We found in the course of the investigation that the turnaround time from clicking on the link in the email to the time that that email was now compromised and sending out phishing emails was around 90 minutes. And so, our ability to detect and the users that were able to notify us as soon as they received that led us to be able to act very quickly. We isolated the infected devices, and there was no spread within our environment.
Yeah, and actually, that turnaround time of the bad payload is actually unusual. Usually, they like to deliver a payload and go dormant, to kind of observe, watch, and look for the best opportunity. This was kind of an anomaly from the perspective, it was fast-acting, which is scary because if you're not on guard and prepared, you can't get on guard and prepared in time. So the other issue that we wanted to bring to the attention of the Board and for the benefit of the general public is, when you're traveling, we have created a new policy that we are banning the use of public Wi-Fi. And the reason for that is, it is a very high likelihood that one of the available methods that was used was a false front end to a Wi-Fi connection. And people at a conference, of course, you walk around, they tell you what the login is, and you trust them, right? Because you're sitting in their conference facility. It turns out that the particular conference facility has terminated the agreement with their management company subsequent to this event. So perhaps that tells a bit of the story. But the best practice is to either take with you a hotspot from the county, which we have some of. They're fairly inexpensive, offices should have hotspots in stock where they can give out to employees that are using it remotely, or use your cellphone as a hotspot because that's a trusted cell device. And in doing that, you eliminate the man in the middle or the impressionists that like to pretend to be the good Wi-Fi connector, which they really aren't. And then, the second thing that we're recommending-
Can I just interrupt for a second? So if someone's traveling for a conference or whatever, can they go to ADP and like, check out a hotspot?
We do have some hot, how many do we have, Frank? We, a few, we have a few. Like, in my office, I have, I have three that we have in the auditor's office. So when I go to a conference, I grab a hotspot and take it with me. If somebody else is traveling, we just, and we have a checkout system. You check it out, and there's a unique code in that hotspot, and only you know it, and you identify to it, and it's a clean connection. So if you don't have one, we're happy to loan them, as we have them available. But if you're a larger organization, I would recommend that you get a subscription to the hotspot, and ADP can assist with that. The second vulnerability that we witnessed is, which is a real big fad, is QR coding. And the phishing that is done with QR coding, we were joking about this yesterday, is called quishing. I mean, they have to come up with these words, right? It's using a QR code-
They could have done better, though, don't you think?
Yeah, they could, they could do much better.
I feel like they should workshop that a little longer.
A little bit. So Zach, you can hold up the QR code. So this is a classic QR code, right?
For Mr. DeVorek?
Yeah.
It looks like it is. It looks like it is.
That was a cheap shot. So typically, people go and they will post those on a wall of a conference facility for the attendees to grab with their phone. And here's the challenge with that, when you use your phone to grab that, you really don't interrogate where you're going. You're trusting that that is sending you to a proper website. In fact, it may not be.
Does this go somewhere?
Yeah, go ahead and try. Welcome, Russia, yeah.
Oh, this goes to G I County?
It does go to Jogga County. So as you know-
This wasn't a quishing.
If you, if you interrogate-
It means my new word.
If you interrogate the URL-
Yeah.
Then you are connecting and trusting it to verify. But here's the challenge, as you know, you're looking at a URL address, and clever people just simply turn two letters, right? And they become legitimate websites, but not the one you think you're going to. So as a general rule, ADP is warning people to not use QR coding, to not use them unless you are confident the person who's providing that QR code is legitimate. And you know, what can you do? You go on any ad on TV and you see a QR code to go buy something. I don't do it. I was at an auditor's conference two weeks ago, and two of the presenters had QR codes, and I refused to, I, could you imagine that? I mean, yeah, I'm clicking away at it.
Did you stand up and start yelling?
No, I just went out and got a cup of coffee and I was done. So our advice is, don't use public Wi-Fi, especially in airports or restaurants. And only use trusted devices like hotspots on your phone. And two, don't use QR codes, if at all possible. Or if you do use them, verify the URL is where you want to go to before you accept it and go to that site. So we spent, and Frank's got the actual numbers, I think the team spent, in one week, we burned a hundred and some hours? Individually, I mean, we worked basically triple shifts, it was crazy. But, you know, we felt, you know, that was, we had to do that. We had to get ahead of it and stay ahead of it. What I'm happy to report is, I was actually coming out of a conference with auditors going to a training class in Sandusky when this occurred, and I posted on the auditor's list server, the anomaly. And because I did that, several auditors transmitted to their ADP boards, and they were contacting Frank saying, how do we share data? How do we share who you're blocking so that we're all, we're not all doing duplicate work? So Frank, could you speak a little bit about the coalition that's being-
Actually, Zach's the one running point on that. Essentially, we've created an intelligence sharing group in about 10 counties at this point now, and we're all just giving each other information so we can sort of try to stay out of the curve here. But yeah, that was Zach's brainchild there.
Okay. What's the, what's your typical response time from a phishing email hitting someone's inbox to you guys, you know, being notified and locking down that domain?
So as soon as we receive the phishing email, we react to it. So ultimately, this depends on the user. If the user reported it as soon as they got it, then we're reacting to it right away. If the user sometimes will report it a month later, unfortunately, we're reacting to the thing, right? But we've made it a priority that if official alert comes into our system, that's the first thing you take care of.
Yeah.
The high vulnerability attack seemed to spike on a Thursday evening. I think I received, so I, and I'm much further away from the problem. I mean, I'm obviously getting it after they're working the problem. Frank emailed me, I think at 2:00 in the morning, Friday morning.
Well, that's kind of what I was wondering too, if someone, you know, going to bat and they're like, hey, that's a phishing email, and they flag it. Is there somebody at ADP that's real-time watching that?
So within the normal hours of the day, yes. Outside of that, we do rely on detection methods to alert us or something.
Yeah, I would recommend if you're, if you're getting your email and you see anything suspicious at all, don't do anything with it until the beginning of the morning where you can send it to the fish alert. Or send it to the fish alert and don't touch it.
Yeah, right, right.
You know, you're going to lose a couple of hours if it's in the evening and into the morning, but that's a good precautionary method. As soon as the other, as soon as I posted on the list server, basically, all 88 counties were notified. So by Friday morning, before I did my class in the morning in Sandusky, I mean, Frank and I were texting every two minutes that, you know, these counties have been added. This one is a non-issue. So we overworked the problem, so we got a little bit of pushback. You can imagine if, I'll take an example, Ashdabula County. We saw a breach in Ashdabula or an inbound from Ashdabula. We blocked every known government web domain from Ashdabula County as a precaution. And then we lift them as we can guarantee their security. That is the good practice. It's a bit-
It's over-inclusive, but it's kind of necessary, I understand.
It is. And of course, the affected people that are not part of the problem are a little upset by it. I'd rather deal with that issue than deal with, oh geez, I'm sorry, I didn't block you, and you sent me something bad, and now we're all underwater.
So that was one of the questions I wrote down, was what the policy in place is dictating how long and when sort of, you know, these blocked inter-county communications can then resume?
Yep, Frank, I'll let you address that.
I'll turn that one over to Zach, because we have a process that he manages, and it's basically a domain unblock process. So I don't want to get too heavy to it, but essentially, the gist is we have a whole series of remediation pieces.
They have to actually send us a report.
Yeah.
And it has to indicate, if they were compromised, what action they took to become non-compromised. And it has to meet a certain standard. So for example, if a county says, yeah, we found we got hacked, and then we, you know, we just basically rebooted. And but we're not, and then one of the questions is, do you use MFA? And if the answer is no, we're not unblocking them. Because they're going to instantly be reinfected. So we actually force, in a sense, an elevation of their security by our questioning. And to some entities, that's considered to be, you know, not to their liking. But again, I would rather be blamed for being over-conservative with that than under-conservative.
Okay. And that's a, who approves that process as far as the unblocking goes? Is it Frank, or is that?
It starts with Zach.
Yeah.
It moves to Frank, and then it moves to me. So ultimately, there are multiple eyes that view it, all evaluating the risk. And, you know, we all have to take that accountability for that action.
That makes sense. And then the, my last question I had was just about recognizing our staff who was flagging these emails. And I know Christie was one of the people that flagged a phishing attempt.
I thought it wasn't letting you your name. So now it's public.
She did something good, she did something good, so I'll, I'm sorry. I'll, she did something bad, I wouldn't bring it up, but she did something good. So, I mean, I, my understanding is, you know, something went in her file notifying her. But has there been any sort of talk about recognizing staff, especially these major phishing attempts that are really, I mean, they're really protecting the county and our infrastructure by being proactive in the way that Christie was?
Yeah, I mean, internally, I do have a process that I use to reward good behavior, just as any elected does with their staff. I, you know, I evaluate, I believe people should be compensated and rewarded for exceptional work, exceptional duty, and exceptionally long work hours. Those are things you can never get back. There's a lot of employees with young families, you're taking them away from that environment. They're doing it because they care about the work they do. And I think the county and the people within the county get it. They get that we should be rewarding people for that. Trust me, the reward is not excessive. It's probably kind of a joke at times, but it is a way of recognizing them. And I do enter those recognitions into their personnel files. So that at review, you know, that is obviously something that we consider when we're looking at promotions into certain levels and rewarding people with increase in salaries.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're, you know, across the departments, we're doing something positive for those employees.
I can't speak for other departments. I mean, I heard that there was an accommodation put in Christie's file. I think that is a great, a great thing to do. She probably want a million dollars, but I don't know that the budget will allow for that.
I just was lucky that day because I was actually on my computer when it actually, the email came in directly. Like, I caught it like, right away when it came in, sent the fish alert, and it removes it from your inbox. So if you're not aware, if you never use the fish alert button, it will remove the email directly from your email inbox. So once you send that, it takes it away and they start their process. There was a second email that actually came in right after that, actually from someone in Belmont County that said that we had been compromised and that our AT department had been, our AT department had been notified. And I called back to your office right away and said, hey, they are aware of this, this is a legitimate issue. And then, I never heard anything more after that. And then Frank started doing what they need to do on their side. And then, there was another email that came through that same server that said that another email with another invoice had come through, and so it had gone through another county. So it just continued to keep going. So I'm glad that we were able to protect the county and do what we needed to do.
What, how many counties should we have blocked now?
I think we're around eight or so that are blocked.
My goodness.
So it's still out there, it's still pinging around. We, I suspect this could be related to the Lorraine County breach. Lorraine County paid ransomware, they were severely breached still and not in full operation. But this is, this is bad, so.
Approximately how many counties or subdivisions got caught up in the ransomware?
Seems like everyone, right?
Well, we don't know that this is related to ransomware at all. For Lorraine County, we suspect that that was ransomware, but we don't know that for sure. But this was simply a compromise of the email accounts. Usually, things are kind of split up now on the dark web. They have what are called initial access brokers. And what they're doing is stealing the initial access, and then they sell that to somebody else, and then they're the ones that get in and deploy the ransomware. So this might have been an initial access broker that was just trying to steal credentials. And then the worst stuff, it may be still to come. We may find that in a couple of months, that all of a sudden, all these counties start getting hit with ransomware because they were compromised.
So we had produced a very small document for you to-
Yeah, nineteen pages.
Yeah. This is a public, a public available document. We did redact some elements to it.
Those are the ones that-
Yes. So we just thought because of this, it was important for the public to be aware as well because we do do business with the public, and we don't want them to be compromised any more than we want other government agencies. So you're free to share this versus the other documents you receive confidentially through the ADP board.
Well, thanks for coming in and explaining all that for us.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now I know what quishing is.
Yeah, quishing.
Trying to bring that into my vocabulary.
Good morning.
Good morning. No quishing for me.
No quishing.
Your name?
My name is Shane Jar with the County Engineers Office, and I am here to present items four, five, and six. Item four, the County Engineers Office is requesting the Board award the bid to Ryanek Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Sperry Road, County Highway 12, Sections B through G in Newberry, Russell, Chester Townships in the amount of $1,220,100. As they represented the lowest and best bid, and the bid bond submitted shall serve as the performance bond for this project.
That came in under your estimate, right?
That one was, I think that was 5,000 over our estimate.
Oh, that one was?
I think that was one-
No, that's the next one.
Isn't the next one?
Well, the estimate here is 1,220,100.
Oh, no, you're right. This one came over the next, I had them backwards. So this one just came just over the estimate. I'll make a motion to approve number four.
Second.
Mr. Breckin?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number five, the Engineers Office is requesting the Board award the bid to Ryanek Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Fairmount Road, County Highway 16, Sections C through E in Newberry and Russell Township in the amount of $690,223. As they represented the lowest and best bid, the bid bond submitted shall serve as the performance bond for this project.
I move to approve item number five.
Second.
Mr. Breckin?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. And the last item for me today, item number six, Engineers Office requesting the Board approve and execute change order number one, increasing the contract with Ryanek Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Auburn Road, County Highway 4, Sections R through U in Sheridan Township in the amount of $39,943.50.
Shane, can you talk about what necessitated this change order?
The amount of pavement repairs after we milled the road off exceeded our estimate, and it's somewhat of an unforeseen condition. After we mill off the surface, we assess what's there. We make our estimates at design time, and it was a little more than we expected.
A little worse than I thought. Alright, I'll make a motion to approve item number six.
Second.
Mr. Breckin?
Aye.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. You did?
You too.
Good morning. Linda Crombie with the County Planning Commission. First, number seven, the Planning Commission is requesting the Board approve and execute the final plat for Coldwater Reserve, which is a replat of Sublots 15 and 16 to create Sublot 15R. It's located in Hampden Township, owned by the Bertoloni's, and it's going to be a consolidation total of six acres. It was approved at the June Planning Commission meeting.
I move to approve item number seven.
Second.
Mr. Breckin?
Aye.
Mr. Breckin?
So we go on to the next one?
Yes, please.
Next one, the Planning Commission is requesting the Board approve and execute the final plat for Lake Lucerne subdivision, replat of Sublot 4 and 5 in Block M. And it's going to create a Sublot 4R with a consolidated total of 1.1 acres, and will loss are owned by Christopher James Hyman. And it was also approved at the June Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, I move to approve item number eight.
Second.
Mr. Breckin?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, you used to use a Sharpie for these?
Yeah.
Okay. This is my first time doing this. Very exciting moment for me. I think, I know, and I'm good. I'm not used to using black. It's all blue.
It's always weird.
Give me a couple seconds.
Take your time.
Let it bake for a minute.
Kathleen Miller with Water Resources, here to ask the board to approve and execute a service contract with Missions Communications. They perform monitoring and alarm systems at, like all of our locations. And the contract, I'd like to make it retroactive to May first, that's when their new pricing came out, so that all invoices in that time period will cover that new pricing. And then through November thirtieth of 2026, in the amount not to exceed forty thousand, that's thirty-five K for wastewater and five thousand for water.
So how, did the new pricing go up or down?
A few things stayed the same, but a couple items went up.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, so this is under fifty thousand dollars, so we don't need A.D.P. approval on this?
A.D.P. did approve it. There is A.D.P. approval on the contract.
But not, not board approval?
We don't have to go to bid for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. I'll make a motion to approve item number nine.
Second.
Commissioner, break.
Aye.
Commissioner, break.
Yes.
Thank you. Credit card stuff.
We haven't had one in a while, so it's not, you know. I, I was trying to like consolidate them all together. So item number ten is a resolution twenty-five one thirty-four, which is a seventh amended resolution approving the use of county credit cards to include a new credit union visa for Department of Aging and some additional employees for Job and Family Services to cards. So that's number ten. And then eleven and twelve are the applications for authorizations for the use of those credit cards for the Department of Aging and for those additional employees for Job and Family Services. And then number thirteen is the certification request for the credit holder and interest for the quarterly use on that new credit union visa for Department of Aging.
All right, so I'll move to approve items number ten through thirteen.
Second.
Commissioner, break.
Aye.
Commissioner, break.
Yes.
All right, number fourteen, we're done signing. Just number one.
We have to see that. I think we can continue. You want to read your fourteen?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution twenty-five dash one thirty-five to ratify an amendment to Article four, Section four point two, to the Code of Regulations of the Northeast Ohio Airwide coordinating U.S.C. NOAC, that doesn't make one of its seats specifically reserved for the county engineer.
Thank you. At this time, is the engineer in the audience?
Yes, sir.
This is Andy Hutt, engineer.
Yes, sir.
And just want to stress the importance of having an engineer on the NOAC board. Take it away, Andy.
Few thoughts. Our, well, the member counties have their engineer on the board as voting members now and have...
All of them, do you say?
Uh, three of four, I believe all of them.
Okay.
County's a little different, being that they're a different form of government, but engineers there too. It's fair, allows a voice that supports the taxpayers of rural Amish community.
Can you get the microphone?
Sorry, yeah. Because a lot of our constituent counties are more urban than rural, so representation is as difficult as it is already. It allows roads, bridges, safety concerns to be paramount from the point of technical expertise and experience that the engineer brings to that table. It's something that is important. It has to be there all the time in the forefront as a voting member. Even though we may, we may be outvoted, it is important to represent. We may have nine percent, I think we have something like nine percent of the lane miles in the organization of, the public organization, and we only get four percent about the funding. So chasing, supporting, and advocating for funding that we are due is one of the important things, most important things, that that seat has to represent every time there is a vote. And if not, have an alternate that is directed in, in understanding of what the desire is for Joga County. Also, I'll just personally state that I do have a lot of experience in the other counties, Lake County, Cuyahoga County, having worked for the Department of Transportation prior to this engagement. And a lot of the areas that are discussed, they're not really transportation focused, are more environmental sometimes, and sometimes it doesn't seem that, in my opinion personally, that's not where NOAC was originally directed back in the, I think, near the sixties it was formed. I can recall professors in college that were members and directors of ODOT and NOAC discussing the new Cleveland Stadium from the old municipal stadium, and some of the conversations we have involved with about Brown Stadium. It is important to be involved and to raise a voice for or against a decision that the area-wide benefit may be voted upon that doesn't serve Joga County, or, or it may. It basically, I would say, it's like anything, you can't complain if you don't vote. You have to be there to vote, and you have to be there with knowledge and understanding of what you're voting on. I've been all over the bridges and roads of Northeast Ohio, having been on all the ones in Lake County that are state-owned, all the ones in Cuyahoga County are state-owned. A lot of Cuyahoga County bridges, all the bridges in Joga County, state and county bridges, I've been under, were on, and they're responsible for. That kind of expertise and, and technical experience is, is what needs to be, in my opinion, represented, and other counties have that.
Now, with your credentials, like, where did you go to college?
Well, Cleveland State and Lakeview Community College. And credentials, yeah, one of the hardest in the nation to become a county engineer is the requirement to be a professional surveyor, which I am, and was first, and professional engineer. With each of those licenses, there's four years of experience that is required prior to getting that license, and eight hours of testing each license. So sixteen hours of testing, eight years of experience, plus a four-year degree in engineering or surveying is quite a track record. I'll throw in a CDL license there too, Class A tanker, doesn't plow snow. And that's kind of what we do around here too. And you know what? Snow goes on bridges, and there's ways to plow bridges, there's ways to salt, there's ways to brine. It's called transportation, it's called commerce. Trucks don't move, America doesn't move, and that's our number one job. And if trucks can get to where they need to go, guess what? The Amish can get there, you can get there, cars can get there. And that's a, that's a, a lot of technical expertise comes through experience. And been doing this for quite a while. I had some great mentors from Mr. Phillips, who started me off in Joga County, to Mr. Patel. I was on four eighty before it was open to traffic, because testing concrete and looking at, watching bridges be built. It was nineteen eighty-seven, so before that, my old man was this Korean War C.B., so had been kind of in construction my whole life, if you can imagine. Didn't always like it.
Right.
But that's a little summary of the qualifications, and I believe the necessity to have that level involved in NOAC. Engineers have always been involved in NOAC. And it would represent Joga County well to have that same level.
Okay. As far as where we are in the process, the NOAC board approved this change to the Code of Regulations on Friday. So now where we are in the process is the individual counties need to ratify the changes that's already been approved by the NOAC board. So that's the step we're taking today. I mean, I think it's unfortunate, in some ways, we can't just add you as one seat and have four seats, but based on how the Code of Regulations are currently written, G.I. County doesn't have the population to meet that threshold for another seat. So that's why we need to make that, make that change.
And I, and I think, you know, focus is, all the other counties in NOAC has their engineer as a voting member, and all Joga County wants is the same as the other counties have. And we want our engineer to be a voting member representing Joga County with all his credentials, with all his historic knowledge of roads and bridges.
So I'll make a motion to approve item number fourteen.
Second.
Commissioner, break.
Aye.
Yes.
Things come in any...
Thank you.
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the compensation of a public employee pursuant to O.R.C. one-two-one dot two-two, goal one.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner, break.
Aye.
Commissioner, break.
Yes.
I know your term will tend to twenty-two.
I can't wait for a nation company with a...
There is action.
Flag.
Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board approve the recommendation of the Executive Director of Job and Family Services to grant a merit increase of three percent of the base rate of compensation for one employee, Lisa Milgate, to be effective June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, the first day of payroll number fourteen.
Craig, you want to say some nice things about Lisa?
Oh, yeah. Lisa, I appreciate the opportunity. I wasn't even prepared, so this is coming from the heart. Lisa Milgate is just an absolute, a blessing to work with. Not only has she risen the ranks at JFS, all the way from clerical staff to where she is now as Director of Public Assistance, but her family comes from a line of public service, and this past year with the resignation, or sorry, well, the retirement of Rex Broats in some of our programs, going to Lifeline, Community Action Agency for Lake County, and hopefully soon Joga County, she has stepped up to the plate without even asking for any additional compensation or anything, and taken over publicly funded childcare and PRC, which is our prevention, retention, and contingency programs. And done so with her head held high, bearing down, and learning those programs. And with that being said, her staff loves her, and again, she's a true leader and is, without a doubt, deserving of a merit raise.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve that merit raise.
Second.
Commissioner, break.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner...
Lisa.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase of property for public purposes if premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest pursuant to O.R.C. one-two-one dot two-two, goal two. So moved.
Second. Commissioner, break.
Aye.
Commissioner, break.
Yes.
Who's going with us?
Chris Carroll.
Okay.
I'm heading you in. I have to...
All right. Okay, return at ten thirty-seven?
No action, just confirmative.
Okay, so my item is about the letter to the Ohio Department of Health regarding the operation and maintenance of subject inspection program. Which I think is that this one here?
Yes.
Oh, no, that's not it. That's... Did you have a chance to review this?
Yes.
Okay. And are you okay with this letter, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make that, do I need a motion to execute the letter?
Yes, it would be a motion to approve and execute the, the letter to the Ohio Department of Health regarding operation and maintenance of subject inspection program.
Okay, so I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner, break.
Aye.
Commissioner, break.
Yes.
Hi. Good morning.
Hi. Kathleen Miller with Water Resources, here to ask the board to approve and execute a service contract with Missions Communications. They perform monitoring and alarm systems at, like all of our locations. And the contract, I'd like to make it retroactive to May first, that's when their new pricing came out, so that all invoices in that time period will cover that new pricing. And then through November thirtieth of 2026, in the amount not to exceed forty thousand, that's thirty-five K for wastewater and five thousand for water.
So how, did the new pricing go up or down?
A few things stayed the same, but a couple items went up.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, so this is under fifty thousand dollars, so we don't need A.D.P. approval on this?
A.D.P. did approve it. There is A.D.P. approval on the contract.
But not, not board approval?
We don't have to go to bid for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. I'll make a motion to approve item number nine.
Second.
Commissioner, break.
Aye.
Commissioner, break.
Yes.
Thank you. Credit card stuff.
We haven't had one in a while, so it's not, you know. I, I was trying to like consolidate them all together. So item number ten is a resolution twenty-five one thirty-four, which is a seventh amended resolution approving the use of county credit cards to include a new credit union visa for Department of Aging and some additional employees for Job and Family Services to cards. So that's number ten. And then eleven and twelve are the applications for authorizations for the use of those credit cards for the Department of Aging and for those additional employees for Job and Family Services. And then number thirteen is the certification request for the credit holder and interest for the quarterly use on that new credit union visa for Department of Aging.
All right, so I'll move to approve items number ten through thirteen.
Second.
Commissioner, break.
Aye.
Commissioner, break.
Yes.
Thank you. Credit card stuff.
We haven't had one in a while, so it's not, you know. I, I was trying to like consolidate them all together. So item number ten is a resolution twenty-five one thirty-four, which is a seventh amended resolution approving the use of county credit cards to include a new credit union visa for Department of Aging and some additional employees for Job and Family Services to cards. So that's number ten. And then eleven and twelve are the applications for authorizations for the use of those credit cards for the Department of Aging and for those additional employees for Job and Family Services. And then number thirteen is the certification request for the credit holder and interest for the quarterly use on that new credit union visa for Department of Aging.
All right, so I'll move to approve items number ten through thirteen.
Second.
Commissioner, break.
Aye.
Commissioner, break.
Yes.
I know your term will tend to twenty-two.
I can't wait for a nation company with a...
There is action.
Flag.
July three.
Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board approve the recommendation of the Executive Director of Job and Family Services to grant a merit increase of three percent of the base rate of compensation for one employee, Lisa Milgate, to be effective June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, the first day of payroll number fourteen.
Craig, you want to say some nice things about Lisa?
Oh, yeah. Lisa, I appreciate the opportunity. I wasn't even prepared, so this is coming from the heart. Lisa Milgate is just an absolutely, a blessing to work with. Not only has she risen the ranks at JFS, all the way from clerical staff to where she is now as Director of Public Assistance, but her family comes from a line of public service, and this past year with the resignation, or sorry, well, the retirement of Rex Broats in some of our programs, going to Lifeline, Community Action Agency for Lake County, and hopefully soon Joga County, she has stepped up to the plate without even asking for any additional compensation or anything, and taken over publicly funded childcare and PRC, which is our prevention, retention, and contingency programs. And done so with her head held high, bearing down, and learning those programs. And with that being said, her staff loves her, and again, she's a true leader and is, without a doubt, deserving of a merit raise.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve that merit raise.
Second.
Commissioner, break.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner...
Lisa.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase of property for public purposes if premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest pursuant to O.R.C. one-two-one dot two-two, goal two. So moved.
Second. Commissioner, break.
Aye.
Commissioner, break.
Yes.
Who's going with us?
Chris Carroll.
Okay.
I'm heading you in. I have to...
Okay. All right. Okay, return at ten thirty-seven?
No action, just confirmative.
Okay, so my item is about the letter to the Ohio Department of Health regarding the operation and maintenance of subject inspection program. Which I think is that this one here?
Yes.
Oh, no, that's not it. That's... Did you have a chance to review this?
Yes.
Okay.
And if that passed, we would need perhaps up to one percent in sales tax to offset that issue. So CCAO is requesting that counties submit testimony regarding House Bill three-thirty-five, and so I wanted to gauge your interest. I can draft something for you to review if you're interested in that, because, you know, obviously, we'd have to, we'd have to look at our core government services that are paid by the general fund, and then figure out if we want to do any, if we want to cut discretionary spending, if there'd be a hiring freeze, if there'd be possible layoffs, or if we just want to make it up with sales tax. And so there, you know, there'd be impact to the county and the county government. I personally think that the solution is, I mean, they, the state needs to, the state legislator needs to just completely deregulate, because so many of the things, why county government is as big as it is, is because of these unfounded mandates that are put on the legislature on the counties. But that would be a very unsexy process to unravel. And what's a lot sexier is just to say, we're going to get rid of property taxes altogether.
Well, I'm in contact with Commissioner Casey Kozloski in Ashtria Bula, we talk about.
Oh, nice.
About every two weeks on this subject. And I think, you know, some people are excited about no property tax, no this, no that. If you'd be paying for it in another avenue, and, you know, we'd have to raise sales tax and raise this and raise that eleven and a half million dollars, it's hard to come up real quickly overnight.
Again, that's just the general fund, so all the other departments that have levies, you know, if they outlawed property taxes as a collection method for that, you'd have to come up with a way to fund those as well.
Yeah. So I'm uncomfortable with what they are proposing in Columbus on this, because it's going to be, there'll be more levies ever before. It takes me back to when Governor Casey was there, we lost our local government fund, and the ones that were creative, you know, got through it. And to take away funds from local government is detrimental, it's all.
Now, just to specify, with House Bill three-thirty-five, it would not take the inside millage away from the townships. So they would, the townships would still maintain their inside millage. That's at least my understanding.
So it'd be a heck of a transition.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm kind of a taxationist, theft kind of gal, but as far as taxes go, I mean, I think income tax is the absolute worst, and property taxes, at least you're paying the government, services that are related to your property as far as law enforcement and so forth. And I understand certainly these issues with the reavow and with seniors being on fixed incomes, and, you know, things like the home set exemption and so forth are ways to handle that. And I think they need to look at, you know, setting a cap or doing something as far as how, how much property taxes can increase in any given year. But I will, I'll work on writing testimony that, that just lets the legislator know how this would impact GIA County. I mean, and frankly, it wouldn't be as bad for us as it would be for some counties, because, you know, we have a lot, a lot of room to go as far as our sales tax goes.
Yeah, I do, I do a little bit of that too. You construct a letter, we're off to Columbus, we'll go from there.
Okay, sounds good. And that, that's all I have, support discussion.
Okay, good. Is your timer ready?
It is.
Item eighteen, public comment.
Yeah?
You sure can. There's three minutes, state your name and where you're from.
Yes, sir. Hi, good morning. My name is Xavier Rivera, here from Cleveland, taking a half-day from my job privilege. Not many working people are afforded, but I will have to make up those hours later as I'm not being paid to be here today. I'm here today to ask you to cancel the ICE contract that the county has to close the detention facility that we have here. As of January, dozens of people were detained here after a series of arrests in northeast Ohio, where twenty people were arrested. The ACLU has requested information from the county about the conditions and the identities of these people, but has been rebuffed. This is a failure of GIA County to be transparent to the people who reside here, as well as to the people who reside around it. I ask you this in the wake of our president admitting what people like myself have already known and have been saying for years. He said last week, "Our farmers are being hurt badly. They have good workers that have worked for them for twenty years. They're not citizens, but turned out to be great. We can do something about that." In a lot of instances, the people that he speaks about are in fact undocumented. This is a blatant admission that the focus of the deportation efforts that have been ongoing since his inauguration have not been on people who we've claimed are violent criminals, but ordinary undocumented people who work hard to provide for the abundance that we see in this country. If their goal is to remove violent criminals, why is ICE showing up at elementary schools, at Home Depot parking lots, and at immigration court hearings? The people there are not violent criminals. They're hard-working, decent people, and are the backbone of this country. They are taken advantage of by business owners and wealthy people. Despite what the media likes to tell us, they use limited state resources, and they are not violent criminals, they're our neighbors. They live on the margins of society and provide for us. By maintaining this ICE contract, the county is complicit with the violence and the ongoing attack on undocumented people who are not dangerous to our decadent, excuse me, decadent society, but the backbone of it. As someone who is descended from a Mexican immigrant, I'm not surprised. He only became a citizen in the past few years, but before his marriage to my grandmother, he was undocumented. He's not a criminal, he's not violent, and he is not unique. He was a Teamster, and he served in the Korean War. My dad, his son, has been a UAW member my entire life. Again, he is not a violent criminal, and he is not unique. Most undocumented people are like this, who just.
Your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
You can submit this to us via email though, if you'd like, your own testimony.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for coming in. What's our email, Christine, to, for the, just for the commissioners, the general email? Commissioners@? Oh, Commissioner? Okay, did you get that?
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, no, we don't have that one anymore.
Anybody else have a public comment?
Howard, South Russell Village. This Saturday, there's going to be the fly-in at the Joga County Airport, where the young people are going to come and find out about airplanes. Fortunately, we still have an airport. The people are there, there's going to be another program in probably in August. It starts at seven o'clock in the morning, runs to eleven. We can look at the helicopter that they fly the poor people around in. And I strongly recommend that people come to the fly-in, similar to the, we having the Liberty Camp in July at Chigagami, where we bring a hundred youngsters onboard to tell them about the United States of America. Thank you very much.
And don't forget the pancake breakfast at the airport.
Thanks, Jim, what's that?
They have a pancake breakfast too, on the twenty-first.
At the fly-in?
That's normal, yes. And at least we're going to have, we only have one paid employee at the airport, so at least we'll still be able to do a good job, because you guys almost eliminated the airport. Thank you.
Eliminating the airport's a little different than not paying for a private camera.
Sheriff could have taken over the airport, the same, the sheriff could have taken over the dog.
I would welcome that personally. I think he would do a bang-up job.
Okay, next.
Skip Claypool, Chester, and I just wanted to raise and make a comment about the ratification and the bylaws for NOACA, who will be Ralph's alternate on NOACA, full disclosure. And I'm very sad about this ratification, because it actually is detrimental to Joga County. What has been said is that we need a county engineer at the table, that's true, and we've always had our county engineer at the table. They've always been named an alternate, they have full voting rights when they go to the meetings, and they've always been able to do that. In addition to that, commissioners have always interacted, and you still do, I'm sure, with the county engineer on a regular basis, so you know all the issues, you know what he's concerned about, and so on and so forth. This move demonstrates to me a lack of integrity. One of the commissioners, who's likely impacted, is not in this meeting. This board never had a public discussion about doing this. It was two commissioners from this board who went to NOACA and made a request for this bylaw change, circumventing the public process and hearing what the case should be. This board should be going and asking NOACA to add a fourth seat, which is totally dual. When NOACA started, it was, there was three commissioners from every county, there was a contract, and that was a balanced arrangement for all the counties who were involved. At that time, it was seven counties, now it's down to five counties. There should be more balance, there is zero balance right now in NOACA. And unless we promote and we fight for that, then we will always be at a disadvantage on that board. This actually removes the voice, the county commissioner voice, from that board, and I think that's detrimental to this county. And I'm very sad that this happened, that the two county commissioners today voted to degrade our voice at the NOACA Board.
This, this action today was actually started when Mary Samidi and Tracy Jamison was here, so this has been trying to get along, trying to do this for twelve years or more.
We tried to add a seat, not take a seat away. I was there, so I know.
And for us, but according to the bylaws, for Joga County to get another vote of four, we'd have to have over a hundred thousand people in, with population here.
That's a good point.
And I don't think that, I'm talking, sir! And that's, I don't think anybody would welcome a hundred thousand more people.
But you got your factory, Jim?
No.
You don't have your factories on.
Are we timed up?
Next.
Hi, my name is Elsie Tarsey, I live at ten-ninety-one Shiver Drive in South Russell, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to reiterate what Skip said, that we do need another seat on NOACA, and you should be advocating for that and not going along with NOACA or promoting having less representation. I agree that the county engineers, the county engineer should have a seat there, but so should all the commissioners. If we don't want to do that, I also advocate that we get out of NOACA and have our, and go in with Lake County and get other counties so that we are more represented. Joga County is rural, we are not urban like Cuyahoga County, and they have fifty-one percent of the vote all the time in NOACA, so we really have little representation on that board. That being said, I also would like to say, I have been trying to reach Andrew, I have spoken with Andrew Misha about Liberty Camp USA being part of the two-fifty celebration, and I have had little response from him. Liberty Camp USA, as you know, because your children have gone there, has taught hundreds of children about our Constitution and the founding of our country. And we do it through reenactors, and we teach them to history, it's our purpose. And we should be represented in this celebration. So I'm asking the commissioners to help me become part of that, help us get Liberty Camp USA as part of that celebration. I don't know what to do. I've spoken with him, I've talked with Ruth Kavanaugh about it, and I've talked with Mark Porter about it, but nobody has gotten back to me to include us in the meetings. So if there's anything you can do, if you have any recourse, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for your opinion. Anybody else?
Christine Stenwell from Monson. The NOACA issue, which we've talked about here, I agree with Skip and Elsie, it's never going to be fair and balanced. We're never going to have representation. Whatever numbers we might add, NOACA always raises the bar, so that they're always going to be in charge of what we do here in Joga. So, but we don't have an equal say. I've been to only one meeting, but it was very much that we're going to tell you what to do, you sit here and listen to what we say, and that's just the way we do things. So, you know, Joga is very different, and we, I guess for years it's been suggested that we do match up, and we have to occupy five counties apparently to be able to be part of NOACA, but we don't have people that fit the same, the same personality of Joga with another rural county. So, I would just back that up, that we need to not let NOACA dictate to us what we have to do, because we'll never be able to have an equal say.
Thank you. Yeah, we wouldn't be losing any vote at all, we still have three votes from Joga County.
Right, but it's not going to match their fifty-one percent ever, is my point.
Never.
No, so, so I, but they make that rule, and then it's, you know, it's like the Electoral College, it's that kind of idea. We're not going to have equal representation, because we're a different kind of county.
Thank you.
Commissioner, what's that history? I know, because didn't Cuyahoga used to have less seats on the NOACA Board, and then it expanded to include more? Maybe you know that, Christine.
Cleveland has seats.
That's what happened, so Cleveland added additional seats. When did that happen?
I think, what, eight, nine years?
I think it was, yeah, it's been.
You know, I've got the entire history in a document I can send it to if you're interested.
Not that interested. But, I mean, I just knew that there was a point where GIA County had a bigger voice at the table, and at some point the commissioners.
About twenty-five, thirty years ago, there was engineers that really had the power to go over their projects, or if there was money left over, well, does this county need this for that, because they, they can match it, or whatever. So that's twenty-five, thirty years ago. But those days are gone, so.
Since I have two, three minutes, can I have?
No, it's over.
I think, I think it's, it's important to look at the history. I think it is, it's very interesting to see how it evolved and changed, and how that happened. I think a lot of us were just not paying attention. We didn't think it was going to be a big deal.
Okay.
Just wanted to add that. It is very important.
Any more public comment? Hearing none, I make a motion to return. Second?